We are going to reconvene from recess and what we're going to do is actually one of the students who was going to be recognized earlier during celebrations was not with us and he is here now, so we are going to take a few minutes and just recognize him. So if the board would, we're going to come back up front. Thank you everyone for that. That is very important and I'm glad he was able to come and let us at least shake his hand and thank him for that. Next, this past week there was a Crosby Scholars Retreat. I was planning to go, unfortunately was not able to make it, but I believe both Susan and Dr. Miller were there, so they're going to give us just kind of a brief overview just for our information.
Thank you. The first part of the meeting dealt with the assessment of kind of where are we as far as Crosby Scholar goes. They've been around a little over a year, year and a half, and it's funded primarily through the goodwill and they are the major funding source and we are the first location outside of Forsyth where it's been going on for about 20 years to be added to the group. And so far we have about 2,400-plus students that are participating in grades six through 12 and the whole purpose of the program is to help the students prepare themselves for post-secondary education, whether it's for a profession, whether it's going on to a four-year institution, whether it's a technical school, but whatever that post-secondary training would be is the purpose of Crosby Scholars and responsibility in being on time, in proper behavior, all the kind of facets that are going into it. They have a goal and part of the retreat meeting was to begin to then develop a three-year plan which I believe Susan would go through 17 is what, through the school term 17 because they're already partially kind of into that timeframe and they're looking for a 35% participation goal. We have 28, 29% at middle school and a little less at high school at this point because it's growing into the high school level. A student can start the program one year and if for some reason, whether it's behavior or attendance or participation, they are removed from the program one year up till the 11th grade. They can return back to the program the next year and try to meet the skills. They hope to have a 50% retention rate through 10th grade because that is the last time additional students can be added to the scholar program. Junior and senior years, they do not add any other ones and they're hoping for a 75% to 80% retention rate in grades 11 and 12. As they compare Rowan's initial statistics to Forsyth, which not a whole lot of similarities between how the makeup of the two counties, size-wise or any kind of thing, our first few years are being, are much more engaging and much larger numbers engaged than Forsyth had, but again Forsyth has had 20 years to get to the success level they've had, but they're very pleased with how the program has begun and the level of participation and the parents and the students both seem to be very happy with the skills and the values that are being taught through that.
They also discussed at the retreat some of the needs that they have. They discussed the fact that the city was more involved than the county and they would like to see and need more county involvement in the program. Fundraising because financial help is given to students every year that they are in college. Dr. Moody, do I have that correct? And there's a cap currently of $75,000. They want to promote this financial sustainability and in order to do that, they need to have more fundraising. They also stated that there was a need for a person to head the fundraising that is geared to that capacity. Not everyone is a fundraiser. I would be terrible at that, so they're looking for someone to head that up that is geared in that direction. They also want to increase staff from part-time to full-time. They have two part-time positions that they're hoping to make into two full-time positions. And the use of the technology, Dr. Moody said that possibly they could get hooked into our Schoology. And if you can elaborate on that, that's all I could remember, so if you could elaborate on that, it would be helpful.
Sure. Our Schoology is our learning management system and Andrew could probably do a much better job of Candace defining this than I will, but basically it's the way that we collaborate across the district from student to student, teacher to teacher, with our parents. It's their notebook, so to speak, of all their assignments, their goals, where they're going, and it's the way we talk to each other across the district and we're growing that. So with that, they have all their assessments and data. We're hoping that we're going to be able to push that down through Power School so parents can see, not just the stuff that's in Parent Portal, but they would have access to all of their data and information. So when they're applying for scholarships, they need a lot of that information. And the mentors that help them when they're filling out those college applications, if they had access to that through the student, it would be really helpful instead of them calling the school to get a transcript and what's their GPA and that kind of thing. So we're hoping that, there's a lot about data and privacy that we have to wrestle around, but we're hoping that we can involve them. And one of the ways technologically that we're supporting them as well is on every other Tuesday night, you know, we have a Twitter chat and the Twitter chat coming up is all on Crosby Scholars. Is that right? It's in May, so that students and parents and educators can get in on that Twitter chat on that Tuesday night and learn more about what Crosby Scholars offers as well.
Any questions or comments? Thanks Susan and Dr. Miller for that. Again, I wanted to go but could not and went to, I think it was Woodleaf was the same day, but we appreciate you going and giving us a recap. Susan, do you have, can you elaborate at all on, you mentioned the city being more involved than the county. They reference kind of what exactly they're meaning, how they're involved?
I don't remember that. Dr. Moody, do you remember any elaboration on that?
Sure. What they were talking about is all the financial contributions have been raised primarily by the people in the city and they've served on more of the committees. They've struggled with getting people in the county involved in the fundraising initiatives and on the committee, so they're looking for leaders in the county to become part of it. It's just started with a few people in the city, I think, and so it, you know, was kind of organic that way and they're trying to really grow that with leadership.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, thanks again. Next on the agenda, we have the In View series and Dr. Moody will probably help me with this as we go along. We actually had a conference call last week. Dr. Moody had been contacted and we're still not 100% sure, I think, the chain in terms of how we came up, but there's a television show called In View and it's hosted by Larry King. And it's much different than Larry King Live, but it focuses on education, it focuses on business, different aspects, and then they will go around and they will look at different groups, different educational systems, that sort of thing, that they consider innovative and different. So somehow our name came up. They contacted us about coming here to possibly do a show or to do a segment, I should say, not a show. So we sat through the conference call to kind of get some information because none of us really knew what to expect. And, you know, I think on the front end, we were probably a little bit more excited just because we weren't really very clear. Really the only details they gave us were basically a layout of the day, so they would come here, film for a day. I think it said eight to 10 hours would basically be the layout. It would be about a 90-day process for us. The thing that caught our attention, obviously, I think Dr. Moody would say the same thing, was the cost. There is a cost associated with it and it's because they do not have public funding and they said that the reason they don't do that is because they find that when you have public funding, what happens is those folks want to filter the material, they want to kind of direct which way they go and who they talk to and what they talk about, and they didn't want to do that. So the cost is $25,000, $24.9, so rounded up $25,000. That does include some things though. They come here, they obviously shoot the segment which would be aired. They also will shoot an individual segment, I believe, that we would have the rights to, as well as a 30-second commercial. So all that is done professionally, we would have the rights to that to use for marketing and those sorts of things, which is a benefit. But, you know, $25,000, that's a pretty big price tag for that and I don't think we would get the exposure that maybe we had anticipated early on. So, do you have anything to add to that, Dr. Moody?
It's a big time commitment right now too and I think in conversations we felt like it, while it would be great to have if somebody just gave it to us, to have to find the funding for that right now. I think that there's a possibility that we'd have this opportunity later and if we pass on it for now, and I think that was Josh and I's recommendation when we finished, we thought about it for a couple of days and just felt like it, probably the timing is wrong. I think it would be better for us to be able to tell our story nationally when we have some results. And I think we are getting recognized and people are hearing our name about all the innovative things we're doing, but the proof is still in the pudding. So until we start to make some changes, that's the real story is once we have some results to show and we thought we'd get a better bang for our buck at that point, but it was a great honor to be able to talk to the producers and for folks to be talking about us.
Chuck, you mentioned commercials. What type of commercial were you referring to?
Well, basically they would shoot a segment which I believe they said was about five to eight minutes, if I remember correctly, which would actually be on the show. Then there would be a separate mini-segment which was about three to five minutes that they would do, that would be a little more geared toward what we want in terms of our system. And then it would be a 30-second commercial that they would shoot basically for us, so kind of a snapshot of the system and we could use that to show at conferences, we could use it for recruiting purposes, just because the names there and obviously In View and Larry King carries at least some weight. As far as the exact details of that, we don't know. We didn't really get into that. We talked for about an hour, asked as many questions as we could, and as we got into it, again, we were not as excited just because of the timeframe now, so we didn't really delve a whole lot into it. But we did tell them we needed to talk to the board and it's going to be a board decision, so that's really all the details that I have on that.
Were there any limitations on other real commercials, like being sponsored by some business downtown?
Say that again?
Would it be possible or feasible to have some business downtown actually sponsor this? And this is sponsored by Chick-fil-A, for example?
Oh, in terms of having it paid for as well?
Absolutely.
Certainly we could have someone pay for it and that was kind of our initial thought was, yeah, we could probably get somebody to fund that. As far as having the commercial mention other folks, I have no idea. I don't know if that's possible.
And I don't know if it's possible to have their name mentioned, but we have a very aggressive strategic plan right now and I think, you know, our biggest feeling was this isn't, we need to do something for recruitment and it could certainly be helpful, but it's not a priority for the district right now. It happened to kind of fall in our lap and we didn't want to just jump on it because it kind of fell in our lap. We went back to strategic plan and said, to do this, they basically said it would require a lot of our time, so I'd have to go out and find a sponsor or somebody on staff would have to find a sponsor because I wouldn't think you'd want to take that out of the general fund. You'd want somebody to sponsor it. So that takes some time and if we got somebody to sponsor that, it would keep them from sponsoring something else potentially that we had rather have, that was higher up on the list in our strategic plan. We just felt like the timing was really aggressive, there was a money element, and it wasn't our highest priority. And it was a big honor and it was easy to get caught in the trappings of it, but it probably wasn't the highest priority right now.
Right program, wrong time.
Susan?
And I think what you said about waiting until we've got the proof in the pudding and we can tell our whole story would be much more beneficial than going ahead with that right now.
Maybe we could bring this back to you, we could have a follow-up conversation with them and say, would this still be a possibility next fall, maybe after we have some results? And we could discuss it again at that time, yeah, or a year from now.
And I would think, you know, even if they said no, that's probably not going to happen. I think, you know, it doesn't really change where we are. I think it's still a lot of money, it's not necessarily the right time, it's not exactly what we thought it would be, so in my opinion, I think, you know, if the benefit's not there, I don't think the timeframe really affects that. But again, that's up to the board, so any other questions or comments regarding that? We did definitely want to at least have the phone, the conference call, we certainly at least wanted to bring it to the board and relay as much info as we had, even though it's limited. So at this time, if there's nothing else on that, no motions or any, or it's really not under action items, but we'll just leave it at that and we'll let Dr. Moody communicate back and tell them this is probably not the right time and we'll see what happens in the future. Okay? Next, we will move into discussion action items and the first piece on there is the Drivers Education Program, which we discussed briefly at the work session. Mr. Van and Mr. Tim. Push the red button.
We, can you hear it now?
Did you push the red button?
It's down.
Okay, there you go, there you go.
We did discuss this in our work session and right now Mr. Beck has about $319,000 that we spend annually on our Drivers Ed program. And as you know, right now, there is a huge possibility that it will not be funded by the state this coming school year. We have, our latest information came from Thursday where we had the Drivers Education Advisory Committee met and our DPI representative had indicated that right now, what he is hearing is that the intention is from the General Assembly is that they will no longer fund Drivers Ed through the Highway Fund. So there is a very strong possibility that we may not get funding for this coming year. The state does allow though that LEAs can charge up to $65 per student to help LEAs offset this cost and we had discussed maybe the possibility of allowing us to charge the $65 for this coming school year. And we certainly are here and Mr. Beck's here and we certainly can try to answer any questions that the board may have pertaining to that.
Dr. Moody?
I discussed this last week at the superintendent's conference with a number of superintendents and how, what they were going to do in other school districts and everybody is scrambling to figure this out. I want you to understand what the impact of this means, so when you're talking to your legislative delegation about this, this essentially, even if we charge the $65 fee to students, which will be different for our children and a lot of money for some of our families, in addition to that, we are interpreting the law to say that we are required to offer it, so we don't have any, we can't not offer it. And it was going to cost us an excess of $300,000. So you're talking about six teaching positions. Many of the school districts are saying they're going to up their high school class size because every high school's going to lose a teacher or two because we're going to have to pay a Drivers Education teacher. So that means one less English teacher, one less math teacher that's going to be teaching Drivers Ed. The impact to us is huge and I'm not saying that, I don't think that we should be in the Drivers Ed business, although I'm not sure that I think that is our business to be in, but I can clearly say when it takes a classroom teacher out of the classroom, it's a dramatic impact. So any conversations you're having, this is a big deal, guys. This is a big deal.
Questions or comments?
Am I misunderstanding that? I'm sorry, wasn't recognized, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jean, that's okay.
Because I thought that Drivers Ed was taught outside of regular school hours, so am I misunderstanding what you said?
No ma'am. It is taught outside of regular school hours, but we would have to take our funding to support these teachers, so we would be losing the teacher inside the classroom because we have to waive our money to pay Drivers Ed teachers.
Yeah, my question was similar to that, but how much time does a drive-in teacher actually spend teaching Drivers Education in a week's time, for example? The same time he would or she would if they were in the classroom?
There's more cost involved than time of the teacher. We have to buy cars, we have to buy fuel, so it's really, my analogy of losing a classroom teacher is if you look at the big pot of funding, that's what it's equivalent to, but time outside the classroom, I don't know how many hours the Drivers Ed teachers, Tim, do you know, actually teach, but it's going to be over $300,000 deficit for us.
When you add that together, it becomes irrelevant. Really does, I agree.
Susan?
Just a comment that the Chamber will be sponsoring a meeting for all of our state legislators on April the 10th.
Say that again, who's sponsoring that?
Chamber. The Chamber is sponsoring it.
Good to know. Richard?
Just so I understand the figures, $319,000 is what we currently have aside from cars to do the program or do we put extra money into it now?
The 319 includes the entire program.
Okay. So that if we were charging 65 for 1648, that'd be about $115,000 we'd generate if we collected it. So in fact, we're looking at about a $200,000 minimum impact on our cash flow at this juncture. 211, okay. And Dr. Miller, also, the 319 is funding that transportation gets now to do this program, however, we have not purchased cars in several years because out of the 319, we do not have enough money left to replace cars, so, yeah, yeah. Leaves us with about a 211, 210.
Yeah, and the $65 is currently the state's cap, so even with that being said, we're still, you know, that's only a third of the program that we would need.
Dean?
Just for clarification on the statute, and maybe somebody can bring us up to speed, we're required to offer it, we're not required to fund it. Is that correct? Right. That's the statute, is that we're required to offer it.
That would be correct.
Just to clarify, because the way it was said a second ago, it sounded like we would be under some kind of lawsuit potential. So the statute, as far as I know, and asking for your clarification, is that we offer it, not fund it. So, without sounding crass, our obligation is not to pay for a student, so if they don't have the funds, our obligation is to offer it. Right? And so just to clarify that, with that, as far as you're ear to the ground with the legislation, has there been any conversation if they're not going, if they're not going to be giving us money to possibly change that cap? Has that been a conversation, does anybody know of?
That has been a conversation, is that the hopes would be that if they were not going to fund it for LEAs, that they would remove that $65 cap.
That's actually what the Superintendent's Association is asking for, is if you're not going to fund it, then let us charge the full fee to students. And, you know, that's not optimal because that's about, what, $300 a student or maybe a little less, about $265 or something per student? And most of our children couldn't afford that, but that is, that is the intent, is if we can't get the funding, then at least release the cap.
Chuck?
To Dean's comment, if we offer it, we have to fund it minus $65.
Well, right now we do because the state's cap is 65. We cannot charge more than 65.
And if you offer it and someone takes it, somebody's got to pay for it and that somebody is us.
I understand that. My point was that we offer it and if we were to institute a $65 fee and they couldn't pay the 65, we're not required to scholarship the 65. That's my point.
Yeah, that's what I'm taking.
That's correct.
Susan? Okay. Dr. Miller?
And maybe to take that out one more step, we might even have the latitude of, here's what our funding will cover and when that's up, we've offered it and until we get more funding, we can't offer it.
Other comments, questions?
Once again, just for clarification, this is for next school year.
July 1st.
15, 16.
That's great. The current funding we have should get us through June 30th.
And I, you know, this puts us in, it's a very interesting situation, obviously, simply because, you know, on one hand, I'm a believer of education is funded largely by tax dollars, so people are paying taxes and there, a lot of these things are covered by that. However, the problem that we find now, as Dr. Moody kind of alluded to, is you can't possibly take a per pupil tax allotment and cover everything we're required to cover now. We can't even get close. We know that just with our current budget. So, you know, I hate to ask students to pay for any more, especially when parents are paying taxes for education, but at the same time, this is a state issue. You know, we're stuck here having to offer something and we have to play by the state's rules and so it, and we've talked about this before too, even back during mediation, the state puts us in situations where they can kind of push away from the table, make it our problem, even though it's certainly not really our funding problem. Chuck?
Yeah, to Richard's comment also, it sounds like just rhetoric, but we could say, yeah, we're offering it and we will comply with it as soon as we get the funding to do so, putting the pressure and responsibility on the state. We've done what the state has asked us to do, we've offered it, and when we get the funding, we'll go ahead and give it. And we can make a vote on that and send a resolution to the state that this is our way of addressing it.
Jean?
Mr. Beck, I'm concerned with the students who have completed the classroom portion, but who would normally be driving this summer. You know, approximately how many students that's going to impact because all of them won't have driven by June 30th, will they?
What I've instructed the instructors to do, the lead instructors, is they're trying to get a count to not overextend the classroom so that they will not have that problem. So that's where we are now, just waiting to hear word.
Dean?
What's our timetable as far as our budget in reference to when? I know the state's predominantly always late and do their own, make their own rules, but as far as when would be the last date we could make a decision, whatever that decision might be?
Well, you know, we're working on our budget now, so.
Well, the reason.
Question for Tara, but we're working on budgets now.
There's a couple of follow-ups to that, the point to get that conversation going. If we were to institute a fee and say, vote tonight that there's a fee and for some miracle happen, the state decides to fund it, we could drop that from our, or we could change that afterwards. That's a possible solution. The other is if they don't fund it, we decide tonight or whenever the deadline, we need to decide to have a fee. We have that fee, they don't fund it, but they raise the cap, do we still have leeway as to what we want to do? That's why I'm asking timetable. Do we need to make a black and white decision tonight or do we have any time? I know we've already thought about it, but do we have any more time?
Well, and I will say too, the next business, or I'm sorry, the next work session is largely going to be dedicated to budget and some capital decisions. So based on what we have now, I think perhaps maybe we should try to get a little more clarification from the legal standpoint to see if there's anything we've missed, but I think we should maybe table this until the work session, make sure we have all the information that we need, and then if we need to make a decision, make an exception of that one to vote on this then, since it is a part of the budget, but that's just my opinion. Dr. Miller? Dr. Miller?
At what point do we start registering for the new fiscal year, the student, the drivers in the program?
Actually, ninth grade orientation has already started taking place. And honestly, we were hoping to have gotten some answers before now. I was told that there would possibly be some answers that came from January's work session with legislation. That did not pan out. That's the reason we're here now. So, yeah, there's a lot of folks in limbo right now, just waiting to hear something.
Dr. Moody?
I wanted to be sure that you knew that the $65 fee that's on the cap, the reason that's on the books for the law, is because many school districts already charged a $65 fee before this even happened. So they were getting their highway allocation, and they were charging $65 in addition to that. We didn't do that. We absorbed that cost all these years. And so our driver's education program was already costing us money in addition to this funding. But then when you get hit for the second time, that's really devastating. So I wanted you to understand, if you charge a $65 fee, whether we get the funding or not, you may want to keep that fee in place. But to your point, Mr. Honorable, I think is a good one, is I think the sooner you can tell students there's going to be a fee, and they can expect it, the better. If you decide in the fall to waive your own fee, they'll be relieved. But if you wait until June to say, you need to get your money together for next year, it will be harder to go the other way. So it, you know, we're asking you tonight to allow us to collect the $65 fee, and if you change your mind later, so be it. That would be a great thing to be able to happen. I will tell you, we've turned over just about every rock. I've talked to everybody about this that I know to talk to, including, you know, Jack Hope, Executive Director, AAAS, himself, and we're not hopeful about this. This is, we're not making any headway with this.
Travis?
I have a question for the, our attorney. Do you see any, any legal precedent that we would have to not provide the, I mean, the, I mean, is there anything that school boards can do if the state decides not to fund it? Because it seems like they would have to be re, how can they enforce, force us to provide something that they're not paying for? I mean, they do it all the time, but, and again, this, this is like a Dr. Moody, I agree with her, that this is really not part of a classroom instruction. This is DMV.
I think the answer is, hello? Is that they certainly can do that. I think cities and counties and other local governments are seeing all the time that the state requires something but doesn't necessarily fund it. And if they say you have to offer something, I think that's more than just a, uh, simply saying you're going to offer it. I think they actually mean you have to offer a course of instruction in driver's education, and if they don't fund it, then you must fund it beyond the $65 that you're allowed to charge. I can't imagine, uh, from a political standpoint, how that's going to work with other school boards across the state that are facing the same problems. Something may be done about it, but if they chose to do that, they certainly can. And they can withhold other funding from us if you don't abide by.
Dr. Miller?
I move that we establish at least a $65 fee for next year's driver education students.
There's a motion, a second, discussion. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Having none, that carries. So we will institute the $65 fee right now, and if something changes for the positive, great. Dr. Miller?
The record would show that the key word, words were at least. Okay?
Dr. Miller?
As they're leaving, I just want to recognize Tim Beck, because I think this is highly unusual. We are thanking people for their leadership. But last week, when, by all rights, I've never known a transportation director to do what he did last week. He sat in a room with principals who said, we think it's instructionally sound for you to change everything about the whole transportation system. Turn it completely upside down, re-figure every single route for the district, and tell us, what is that going to mean, and what is that going to cost, and all the problems with it? And he sat in that room with those people and said, if it's what we need to do for our children, we'll do whatever we have to do to make that work. So I'll let you know what it's going to cost you, but we'll figure it out if it helps children with their instruction. Not one second did he blink to say, there's no way you can do that. And most transportation directors would just tell you, you can't do that. So I just wanted to say that publicly.
Thanks, Tim and Anthony. Next, we have Board Attorney posting, which again, this has come up several times. We've kind of looked at it. We've adopted a job description, and we've tweaked this a few different times. So I, I'm assuming everybody obviously has had a chance to look at the sample posting that was put in the packet. And before we delve into it, I'll just open it up. Are there any questions referring to the posting or the process? It's probably the easiest way to do it. Chuck?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, in Mr. Sowers, Sayers Services as Board Attorney effective as April the 1st of 2015. Apologize for mispronouncing your name, Mr. Sayers.
Well, I think we're wanting to, right now, we're, right now it's pertaining to the job posting itself, so we haven't even discussed that as a board or had a motion made on it yet.
I thought we had approved that already. My apologies.
Nope, we have not. We did, we did approve the job description for the Board Attorney, but we have not approved if we want to post this for a new hiring process for Board Attorney.
I changed my motion that we accept the posting.
It's withdrawn, okay. Any more discussion or questions about that? The plan would be, if there's a motion made and we wanted to adopt the posting, we would obviously have this posted, and we would bring or receive applications in for the position. That would come directly to the board. The board would go through it. The board would have interviews set up. We would interview the board, or interview the attorney as a board only. We'd have questions, we would go through, and then we would choose an attorney, much like we did with Dr. Moody, and we brought her on, so. Yeah, we did, we did. She appreciates that. No, he withdrew that. That was withdrawn.
I changed it to the motion, basically saying what you were saying, that we approved this.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to accept the job posting and to post that for a new Board Attorney. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, we have five confirming votes, so that passes. So we will, I'll get with both April and Christie, and we'll look at getting that posted, and we'll start that process and have those come back, and we'll set up a timeline, and I'll make sure that the board is included on that, so we know what the timeline is on that.
Would my motion now be appropriate?
If you have another motion, that's, yes.
I make a move that we, in Mr. Sayers Services as Board Attorney, effective April the 1st, excuse me, 2015.
There is a motion on the floors, or a second? A motion, a second. Any discussion? Dr. Miller?
It seems to me that we've just adopted a posting process. We didn't put a timeline on it to say when or how that was going to operate. And the services that we've had out of the firm for which Mr. Sayers works has been around longer years than I think I know, working for this board. And it just seems to me, until we have some timeline that says whether he chooses to apply for it, and he made it clear to us last time he was still interested and had more time to be our attorney, that it's inappropriate to sever any services unless he's violated some extensive confidence or whatever of this board. And I don't know that we have any documentation longitudinal over time that speaks to his not having met what we have in the current guidelines, that it's just inappropriate to, until we get a timeline on our posting, to talk about not having the services of a Board Attorney until we get a new one, whether it's Mr. Sayers or whomever approved.
Other discussion?
Understood we had legal guidance on this, Mr. Chairman.
The only legal guidance we had was in terms of whether or not we could have a posting, which we can. And the legal guidance I was given was if we were going to make an action in regards to Mr. Sayers' service, we just needed to discuss that in an open meeting. That's it. So there was nothing that said we could, should, or would do anything. We just, basically what we, would be in our best interest as far as discussing it.
Pass this back to you, sir.
That was your motion. That was wording, if it was going to be done. That was how it should be worded. But that wasn't legal representation or legal direction to do anything. That was simply, that came from Ken Sue. The question was, can we terminate an implied contract, because we don't have a signed contract with Don? His answer was yes. If so, you certainly want to do that in an open session. You should adopt or hire an attorney in open session, and you should dismiss a Board Attorney in open session. He said that is the thing to do. So that, that's the only thing that I think you're referring to, correct? I'm confused.
Uh, yeah, I'm confused, too, sir. I withdraw my motion.
Okay. The motion is withdrawn. So that would be Travis? Or Dean? And? No, I don't, and let's back up. What exactly is your confusion, Chuck? Are you confused by Dr. Miller's comments? Are you thinking we're violating something?
No, I'm confused by the chairman's comment and the note that he gave me, the wording I should use to make this motion.
Okay, but what is the confusion? That, I'm not.
Answer is the confusion.
Okay. The, the wording that was given to you, I can pull the email up, that came directly from Ken Sue. I have his email. I asked Ken Sue if we were going to end our services with Mr. Sayers, because we had discussed that at time as a board, could we do that, and should we do that in open session? His response was, you can do that, and it should absolutely be done in open session. He said, if you were to do that, here is the wording that I would suggest for a motion.
What was the purpose of?
And that's exactly what you have in front of you. I just copied verbatim.
What was the purpose of me having this, then, sir?
Because we discussed a motion being made, and you asked how we would do that. And so I said, to be safe, we would copy it directly from Ken Sue and make that motion as we were directed. That's all.
I'm not aware of asking you how we should do this at all. I was sitting here before the meeting started, Mr. Chairman. You came to me, matter of fact, you proceeded with the phone call, saying, would you make a motion? And I said, well, how would the motion be read? And I had the motion already made up here. I want to thank Don for his years, years of representing the Board of Education. However, the board believes it needs a more formal attorney-client relationship in order to pursue this. I make a motion that we relinquish our current informal agreement with Mr. Sayers. And you brought me this note, says this is what you should say. It came from Mr. Sue. And you make that motion tonight. I made the motion, and all of a sudden, I'm standing out here with a finger up, with my finger in my ear, because what the chairman asked me to do.
No, I think you're confused. I didn't come to you before the meeting.
I am not, I am not confused, sir.
I didn't come to you before the meeting and instruct you to do anything. We did have a conversation, and we had actually had conversations in the past about this, as well as myself and other board members.
I, sir, did not write this note. I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Dean?
I'll concur with that.
Okay. He did. So the motion is withdrawn. I will move that we end our implied agreement with Don Sayers. Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? And I'm going to jump in before you, Travis, if that's okay. The reason, in my opinion, I'm one board member, the reason this has come up, and I've had this conversation with multiple folks, apparently now those conversations didn't take place, but okay. In my opinion, if we are entertaining a job posting for a new Board Attorney, it is awkward because Mr. Sayers has already made it clear that he would apply for that posting. To me, it makes us, it puts us in an awkward situation as a board to ask our attorney, who is serving us as a Board Attorney, a legal representation, who is also in turn applying for that position, which he may or may not get, that is an awkward position for representation, in my opinion. That is the only reason this is being brought up. It has nothing to do with Don, his firm, their service. I just think it's a very awkward situation, not only for the board, but also for Don. That was my intent. And again, the discussion has been had before with multiple folks. I don't know why all of a sudden there's this confusion and this anger, but it certainly was not done in secrecy. Again, I have the emails. We'll talk about this all you want. But that's, that's my, my comment on that. Next, Travis?
If we do that, what is our legal representation during meetings until that time?
That, again, would be up to the board. I have checked with Ken Sue, and it wouldn't necessarily be him, but somebody from his firm, said they would represent us in a meeting, $500 per meeting plus mileage. So we would not be paying an additional retainer in the meantime. We would only be paying them for their services. Obviously, we're paying Tharrington and Smith a retainer now, but that would not go up. So in theory, that cost would actually be less during that time, if we were to go that route. If we didn't do that, then we, we would have to discuss other options. I don't know. Dr. Miller? And then Chuck?
I don't need to restate, I think, what I said earlier, but I do believe that there's no need, I don't necessarily think there's that much awkwardness or problems with Woods and Sayers' firm continuing to represent us. I think Don understands that we are looking, the same way we've rebid other contracts, we're formalizing a contract here and stuff and this kind of thing. And I just, I think the service that we've had over the years, whatever, I mean, there's no documentation one way or the other to say it's good, bad, or indifferent, and I'm not putting a qualitative point on it. I just see no reason to say we're voiding an implied contract until we have a process ready for replacement, because I think there is advice on local issues, and we have a lot of those going on, that Don has, Don and his firm has a better perspective on than any of the other firms we use for our employee cases versus our local operation cases. So I would not support this motion.
Chuck?
Would the chair repeat his motion one more time, please?
My motion is that we terminate Don Sayers' implied agreement, effective April 1st.
How does that differ from the motion I just made, that you shook your head and wondered why I made that motion? How is it different than that, sir?
It's not at all different, Chuck. I'm not the one that withdrew the motion. You made the motion, and then there was, there seemed to be some confusion after Richard's comment. And so I'm assuming that you felt like you were in an awkward spot because maybe we didn't have the legal ability or direction to do that? I'm not sure. I can't answer that question for you. You're, that, that motion is really no different than the one I made. But again, I didn't start the whole thing, so I'm not sure where we're going with it.
Call the question, Chair.
Question has been called. There's a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? The motion carries. Next on the list, the last discussion item we have is the discussion of naming of the boardroom for the new administration building, which is the Wallace Educational Forum. And based on some conversations that have been had, based on, obviously, contributions that have made, been made, rather, for that project, the, the only name that has been brought forward at this time or mentioned would be naming it after Julian Robertson, because at this point, the majority of the funding has actually been given by him for the project. But I believe he opted and was okay with not having his name on the building. But we thought this would be a nice gesture for his participation and cooperation on this project, but also they've given, the foundation has given a lot of money to the school system before this, and also to the county. So his name is nothing new, and the foundation is nothing new. So we'll open that up for discussion. Chuck?
Yeah, I'd like to add, for the discussion, Mr. Philip Kirk's name. In addition to Mr. Kirk's duties as Chief of Staff, and this is his resume, for Governors Martin and the Hoceuser Administration, Mr. Kirk has served as President Hoceuser Administration, Mr. Kirk has served as President and CEO of the North Carolina Chamber, teacher at Knox Middle School in his younger years, Vice President for External Relations at Catawba, and Chairman of the State Board of Education for six and a half years. And I can't think of any man that would be more deserving than this man to have his name put in on the Board of Education.
Okay.
Meeting room.
Travis?
Meeting room, excuse me.
I do agree. I like the Robertson family in there. They're very philanthropic and have really helped not just the school system, but the community at large. I had mentioned something to this, to Dr. Miller earlier, wanting to make sure I didn't put someone on the Board in a precarious situation. But I think it's important that we not only recognize donors, but educators. And I can't think of anybody else. I know that this person on this Board has given me some insight as to how to be a good Board Member. And I hope it's not an insult to you, Ms. Kennedy, but I see her service as a school teacher for decades and then her work on the Board and then now, even though retired and on the Board, still very active in our school system. I would like to have a combination of a Robertson-Kennedy room, if that would not be insulting to her. I didn't talk to her about it, but I feel that her input, even in the Central Office School Building and her career exemplifies recognition. And I believe it's important when we do buildings that we not only recognize those that have been philanthropic, given the money, there you go, philanthropic, hard word for West Highland guy, but also to recognize outstanding devotion to a community. I just want to put that in there also. I know we're not voting on anything tonight, but I'd like it to be considered. I think her credentials and her history with the school system speaks volumes.
Okay. And actually, this is under action items, so we certainly don't have to vote, but that was kind of the thought, but we'll see how it goes. Dr. Miller?
It would help me in this decision-making process to have an idea of the number of sections of the building that we think we want to put some kind of specific recognition name on in making these kind of decisions, if we could have that either now or at a future date.
Yeah, and I think you can cover that, Dr. Moody, can't you?
In looking at the building, certainly there are other possibilities, but I think that there's two clear possibilities for naming. One is your Board Room and the Robertson, Julian Robertson Board Room is certainly a distinctive, it's where decisions are made that are important to the history and the life of the school district. So that's an important room in that building. It will also, we were looking at today, will probably accommodate a meeting space for up to 150 people for training activities as well as a Board Room. So it's on the first floor. In my mind, it's probably the most distinguished place in the building and worthy of the kind of financial contribution the Robertsons have made. The second is the Center of Innovation on the third floor. And that space, we believe, will accommodate maybe upwards to 250 people in that and probably be the only place in town, as far as we know, where you can actually have that kind of training facility. Andrew certainly has dreams of, and we've asked the Robertson Family Foundation to give us a grant to, for lack of better terms, trick out that room with technology and flexible furniture. So it would be the most state-of-the-art room anywhere around, so that we could do high-level professional development in the Center of Innovation. I don't know whether they'll, you know, fund that grant or not, but whether they do or not, there would certainly kind of, you may want to think about whether or not you would reserve that room for whoever did fund the room, which would come at a high level. The combination of names, as you suggested, Mr. Allen, certainly Phil Kirk is a great educator, Jean Kennedy is a great educator, no question about it. You know, the combination of names would work as well, two names on one room. But I think there are two rooms in the building, the Board Room and the Center of Innovation would be the two big rooms.
Chuck?
Any idea who might likely fund the upper room you're talking about?
Not yet, but I was hoping at the ribbon cutting, there might be some folks that might come to the table.
Jean?
I want to thank Mr. Allen, but ask that you please remove my name from the question.
Travis?
And I do apologize if I did that without asking her, but I knew she would...
No apology needed.
She would...Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the honor.
Right. And even if we don't use Ms. Kennedy's name, which she's removed, is to remember that service, time is more valuable than wealth. Those of means, it's very easy to give their means, but time is valuable. You can't replace time. So when we name these buildings, I hope we also include some of our past educators, where it be the recommendations by Board, but just to keep that in mind also, because time is much more valuable than, you can't get that back. So I appreciate it.
Dr. Miller?
I move that we table it anyway.
I'll support it.
The Board Room and the Center of Innovation, if that were part of it, until we have more information about possible changes, I think it would be considered, or others that may need to be considered.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to reclarify this.
No discussion on tabling?
I was clarifying.
We can't discuss a table.
No, just discuss it just after X.
So there still has to be a vote after a second, though, correct?
I made the motion to table the naming of the rooms and it was second.
That's a separate motion. If you were tabling a motion that's already been made, I would direct you to the discussion, but that's what you're doing, you're moving, you put it, it's continuous with another day, you're not tabling a motion.
You're tabling an agenda item, technically, and that is discussable?
Yes.
Okay. So a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Dr. Moody?
One of the things I just wanted to tell you for your consideration, and I don't think it should change your mind in any way or move you to rushing, our groundbreaking is April 18th. And it is one of the few days that I know of that Julian Robertson will be in our school district. So if you were going, and that's probably why we put it on the agenda tonight, is if you were going to honor him and his family in some way, it's a unique day or opportunity to do that. Now, you can do that just simply by saying thank you. You don't have to name a room necessarily. But that's why it was on your agenda tonight, just if that helps in your thinking.
Dean?
I would just add, I was, I'm glad we had the opportunity to talk about it, because I want to look at the calendar before we made any rash decision. We do still have the planning meeting before the groundbreaking. So we do have a couple more weeks to possibly get that information and then we can make an exception and vote at the, if everybody's good with that, we could vote at the planning meeting.
Yeah, we can. And make sure I'm clear, what information are we looking for? What other stuff are we wanting to know, Dr. Miller? Or are you wanting to know?
Well, it was simply, as we talked about the Center of Information, again, we said we'd asked the Robertsons and possibly others to fund it, and we may want naming things for that. And so, I mean, that, to me, was an undecided piece. I don't know that we'd name on both Robertson rooms, because I think if there's somebody else, whether it's Phil Kirk or Jean Kennedy or whomever we want to honor, that we should recognize as many as possible. And that's what was confusing to me, particularly when we had said that Robertson was another possible funder for that.
Other discussion? And Dean, go ahead.
Just to clarify, the reason I was asking, are you saying, Dr. Moody, that those are basically the only two rooms that would be named?
They're the only two rooms of honor in the building, that somebody would actually call it after that name. You would all, you know, you would actually say that name with the Center of Innovation or the Board Room, where there would be other rooms in the building, but I don't think they're really, you know, there's a breakout room, there's, you know, several conference rooms. So you could do other things. One of the conversations that we've had is having a Hall of Distinction, where we put some portraits up of some folks that mean a lot to us in the district, from teachers and Board Members and people who have contributed at very high level. So you wouldn't necessarily name a room after them, but there may be 10 people of honor on a wall with their portrait. So you could certainly do that kind of thing as well.
Dr. Miller?
Question for the Attorney. Can the maker of the motion to postpone, make a substitute motion? All right, I'll withdraw it and hopefully make a new motion if the secondary...
Okay, so the motion has been withdrawn and approved by the second, and now the floor is open for any new motions. Dr. Miller?
I move that we accept the naming of the Board Room as the Julian Robertson Board Room.
There is a motion?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, so that will be the name for the Board Room. At this time, I'll ask Dean to read us into closed session unless we have anything else that has been missed or any other comments.
Yeah, my apologies to the Chair for my little bit of anger. It was a misunderstanding. I felt that I misunderstood what was being said, and I do apologize to the Chairman.
No apology needed. And if I, you know, I'll own some of that too. So if that was on me, I apologize for making it complicated or convoluted. Susan?
I did have a question about the, and I'm sorry that we're having to regress, but I did not do this at the appropriate time. But the next to the last sentence on the Board Attorney posting, I didn't understand the whole sentence.
The second page?
Yes, second page, next to the last sentence, where it says, "Any proposal should include documentation of the firm's ability to meet the standards set forth in this letter." I'm good. But then, policy and the attached documentation?
That should, yeah, I would assume it should just say, "set forth in this letter", because that's all it is. There's no, there should be no policy or attached documentation because the job description is included in the letter.
Okay.
So I would agree with you. We would need to take, probably amend that before it's posted.
I didn't vote on that last. I was trying to discuss something, but, Dr. Moody, you may have mentioned that you probably, we may not want to name both of those rooms, the Robertson room, but then we just voted to name the main room. I would just, for the record, say that we remember that, so that if they do come up and give the money for this innovation room, we don't name it as well.
And I would agree with that.
Just in third-party communication with the Robertson, I have not talked to him directly, and it'll be an honor to be able to meet him and talk with him when he comes. But for what you all have said, all the things that they've done for this community, he is not looking for this naming right in any way, has waived it a number of times. Every time it's come up, he's waived that. And I think if the Robertson Foundation actually does fund the Innovation Center, he would be good with us. I'm making some assumptions here, naming it, anything else we would choose to. So that might, would give us a perfect opportunity to do exactly what Mr. Allen has just said. So, you know, think about some educators that have meant a lot to us and that we think deserve that right. So I think if he gets that title, they'll understand if they fund the Center of Innovation, that they'll be fine.
Okay, motion to enter closed session. Dean has to read us in.
You can read it if you want.
You can second.
I make a motion we enter closed session to consider personnel action that involves an officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee of this Board, North Carolina General Statute Number 143-31811A6, and/or to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to state or federal law, North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A1, and 143-31811A3, or to consult with an Attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the Attorney-client privilege between the Attorney and the public body, North Carolina General Statute Number 143-31811A3, pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A8, for the specific purpose of discussing or formulating plans and emergency responses to deal with incidents of school violence.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? We will now enter in closed session. Thank you.